Everybody, it's nine o'clock. Welcome to the first meeting of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors for the year of 2020 and also the beginning of a new decade. So, welcome, everybody. I'd like to begin the meeting by inviting you to join me in salute to the flag. Thank you, everybody. We're going to suspend the process for a moment, and I would like very much to recognize my predecessor, Supervisor Bone, who did an amazing job as chair for the last year. And I would like to present Supervisor Bone with, not with a gavel, because he gave that to me, but we'll give him something else.
Ooh, that's nice. How can I keep one of those?
It's my urn.
It's real. It's actually pretty nice.
That's beautiful. Smile on his face.
Cool.
It was a great year. We finished it off with, I think, one of our biggest meetings in our history, which ended up being very civil and very good, and I love the public process. You can say being chair is a big job. It's not. It's the same job we do all the time, because what the chair means is staff has to do more work for you. And the nice thing about our Board of Supervisors, we probably have the most competent staff. We have a Clerk of the Boards Association in the state of California. They sit on the board of that. But we have an excellent staff, starting with Ryan, Kathy, Brooke, and Tracy, that do a lot of our work, take care of our appointments, and make this job appear really, really easy. So basically, all we are are actors up here, and they actually write the screenplay for us. So, we don't do it without staff or the CIO's office and with my fellow board. So, thank you, guys. It was fun.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Bone. So, at this point now, I'd like to ask the CIO if there are any modifications to the agenda.
Good morning, Chair Fennel. Supervisor Bass will be pulling item C2 for discussion.
C2, okay. And that's it? All right. I'll entertain a motion at this point. Actually, let me just make one other statement here. We do not have Supervisor Wilson with us today. He has some family obligations, but he'll be back with us next week.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Minus item C2.
Still second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate, excuse me. We'll have public comment on consent agenda first, please.
I have to be retrained here.
I came here to help you on your first.
Testing. I do that a lot, Estelle knows. I stand out there, I used to. So, I'm declaring the sixth district supervisor seat to be vacant. I am a lame duck, and one of my few things here I want to comment on is I did wish to thank Bob Morris for his service. Bob Morris was the best chair I've seen on the Planning Commission for many years. He moved that meeting along precisely. He was very good with the public. He made us all feel welcome to speak there. I only saw him turn off the mic one time, and some guy was throwing the F-bomb at that time. So, I think his ability to work with the public, make them feel comfortable to speak, should be mentioned here. I think it's, he used a technique, and I think when he came down here, he said, "Will you please summarize?" They had five seconds if they kept talking rather than summarizing. At that time, he started getting a little bit, but that's really appreciated. It makes people feel comfortable. And I think Estelle, Supervisor Fennel, has the ability to bring that forward and continue that. So, I like that. Then maybe, I did leave a message for you in Virginia about some other things, maybe as far as Skyping into the meetings instead during public comment on non-items or having a 10:00 time specific. So, that's something that you might consider for public participation. But he was, Bob was fantastic at that. We did have the decision, which Rex made, and I was going to tell Mike, you know, he's not here, but I guess I'll leave the message now, you know, that I think with time, he'll feel that decision was right. I did want to thank all of you for your time of being there. It was very important, that Terregen project. And I think that there is, you know, you had the reasons in here for the thing, the project is inconsistent with the general plan, deny the appeal, significant and unavoidable impacts of the projected project are not outweighed by the benefits and cannot be mitigated to an acceptable level through mitigation measures or project alternatives. And so, that's the reasons for your denial officially here on your consent agenda today. I don't recall which item that was. But I think we all can learn from this particular project a lot. And I think going forward from here, the process did work, you know? I think you had a lot of people, there was some angst because, boom, two minutes and the mic was off, but sometimes different people have different strategies on dealing with the public. As I am a lame duck and leaving, you know, I'm going to leave slowly, just so you know. It's not going to be instant. I'm going to wean myself. But as Mark Lovett said when he came back up once, "I don't want to seem like Swawsky." But I used to be someone important around here. I think that's what Mark said at the time. So, the last thing was when Bob Morris spoke, he was the opposite of air, and I call that, it's acronym arrogant, ignorant, and rude. He dealt with the public very nicely. We had a prior supervisor I don't think had the ability to, and he's no longer with us partly because of that. So, thank you for allowing public participation on your consent items today.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Before the vote, and it's on here, is, and I don't see her here because she doesn't want the fanfare, but Debbie Damiano is retiring after 30 years. Her husband was a wonderful servant for our employee, for our department, and left the legacy, and Sean's stepping up the game and carrying that on. But Debbie worked in economic development and the Workforce Development Board, and I think you have to recognize anybody that works one place for 30 years, especially here. But no, I mean, it's a great job with great fellow employees and things like that, but I'd like to recognize Debbie. She didn't want the fanfare and everything else, but I don't think we should not recognize her vocally and appreciate everything she's done for the county.
Thank you for that, Supervisor Bone. I really appreciate that. I echo your sentiments, and we will give this proclamation to Debbie. Whether she wants it or not, she's going to have it because she's got to be on her wall at some point. And thank you very much, Debbie. Also, thank you to the staff, I would say, for doing a really good job of memorializing the findings and the reasons for our vote on the Terregen. I know that they came in for some fairly harsh words during that whole process, and I do want to say that I applaud the job that they did in doing the work that they were tasked with. So, thank you for that. So, with that, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None passes unanimously with the four of us here. And that will take us on to items pulled from consent, and that is item C2, a letter proposed by Supervisor Madron regarding cottage microbusiness. If you, I'll let you have it.
Thank you very much.
I could explain why I pulled it.
Sorry, you, I'm so sorry.
We have to train you over.
Supervisor Bass? I know. It's day one. It's going to get better from here. I've done it before, guys.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, you know, I think in concept, this sounds good. I've been concerned about how it is actually planned to roll out in actuality, and I had received a couple of phone calls, and I'm not the best one to explain it, so I'm hoping you could share some of your thoughts on exactly how this works and why now's a good time, or maybe since I'm thinking of something that could go back for review by, I mean, we have a cannabis committee still, right? Well, we can talk about that still. I just, I'm not clear whether this is the correct time for this, and I do know Mendocino has apparently moved forward with it, but I have not been able to reach any of the folks there to really get a good indication of why. So, if you wouldn't mind kind of giving a little rundown.
Absolutely. Well, there's certainly been a lot of talk lately about trying to incentivize small farmers to get them into the market, and there's been a lot of talk about what the barriers are for small farmers to be able to do that. I agree that this perhaps proposal is a little too complicated on some levels and not enough detail on other levels. And I do appreciate the input that we received from Humboldt County Growers Alliance and others in regards to this. And so, I actually have a proposal to amend the letter that we're considering sending today and to basically strike all of the pieces in it that talk specifically about a proposed cottage microbusiness license and simply insert language that basically says, "Incentivize small cannabis farmers." And so, I could go through those edits. They're pretty basic, but the basic, in summary, is removing the proposed cottage microbusiness license elements of this and simply providing a letter of support for small farmer incentives. And so, there's three or four places in the letter where I would make those amendments. In the first paragraph, it would say, "Our support for small cannabis farmer incentives." And we would strike proposed cottage microbusiness licenses. And the last sentence of that paragraph, and I've got this written down so that we could give it to Ryan to make sure we have it accurate. In the second paragraph, again, at the last sentence, where it says, "We feel that the cottage microbusiness license would address many of the complaints we've heard," it would be changed to say, "We feel that small cannabis farmer incentives would address many of the complaints we've heard from our constituent stakeholders." In the fourth paragraph, it would read, "We support creating a legitimate pathway and incentives for small farmers," and again, striking cottage microbusiness license. And in the final paragraph, it would do the same thing, striking cottage microbusiness license and inserting new incentives for small farmers. So, basically, what I'm proposing to do is to amend our letter of support, to remove the references to cottage microbusiness license, instead make it more generic in support of incentives for small farmers. As a way to try and make this a little bit more generalized, I think it reflects what our ad hoc committee has been talking about with our plan, our planning director, and it keeps us out of the weeds in terms of getting into this microdetail on the license. So, I hope with those changes, we might consider supporting an amended letter.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Bone?
And I know we have incentives for small growers, and I know that, I think we all agree, this sounds really great and everything else, but when we, the guy that's been chopping this is from Mendocino, and he's been, I think, since last, we got this at RCRC, I think CSAC's got it, Maguire's, Woods, nobody stepped up and done anything. And right now, I tend to not want, Humboldt's got a great reputation. I think we're number one in the state for licenses. We're number one when a license comes through from Humboldt County. They love our licenses because we've done our job. Well, with that being said, it's to whom it may concern, and we went from supporting a cottage, something definite, to we support small, and I think that's already in our plan. We already support that. So, I don't know who we're going to send it to, because I think we could also put in there that we want world peace and everything else, because we support all those things. But there's no one this is going to. So, I think it's, and my biggest concern was, I saw this, and the first thing I said was, "Wow, that's great. That's perfect. That's what we've been trying to do." But then I found out it didn't come from the ad hoc committee. And then what bothered me the most is I checked with all the people that were going to have to implement it, the sheriff, ag, building and planning, and they didn't know anything about it. They hadn't even seen it yet. And I'm wondering what incentives we're trying to do. I wonder what ad hoc, what the ad hocs trying to do for the incentives, because the biggest problem is, is, you know, you had 5,000 and 2,500 feet. So, that still puts Department Fish and Wildlife and the Water Board in play. Water Board under 2,500 feet gives you a pretty much over the counter.
Under 2,000.
You know, it gives you a pretty much under the counter. And as you'll find out, it's not Humboldt County that's the stumbling block. I mean, we have to deliver the bad news. We deliver the bad news, but it's usually saying, "You don't have the water. You don't have this. You don't have that." So, I would like to see, I don't, where's this letter going if we take everything? It started out as supporting the guy from Mendocino's, you know, mission, to now we're just saying, "We incentivize." And I'd sign on with, I'd like to help small businesses. I'd like John, but I think that's already in, can I ask the Building and Planning Director to come up and, because I think we already have some over the counter stuff. If you're 2,500 or less, John, or help me out. It changes.
Director Ford?
Thank you, Chair Fennel. We have permits at three different levels, and two are discretionary. Those are special permits and conditional use permits. And then there are ministerial permits called zoning clearance certificates that are issued, and depending on the zone that it's in would determine the size. Some can be up to 10,000 square feet, some are capped at 5,000 square feet for a ministerial permit. 2.0 also included the provisions to not have to comply with the functional road requirements for owner occupied cultivation sites with 3,000 square feet or less. And so, that was really an effort to allow homesteaders to not have to comply with the road requirement as a way to come in. One of the things that we continue to struggle with in terms of incentivizing things, and this is, as has been mentioned, a discussion with the ad hoc committee right now, is how to frame a permit in such a way that it is something the state agencies would view as being de minimis or something that would not require a lot of extra review on their part to take that kind of hurdle out of the process.
Thank you, Director Ford.
We already have provisions in there to incentivize small farmers. Isn't that, that's what I'm trying, or do we need to, I'm trying to figure out, does this letter actually just be sent to you? Or do we just tell you that's what we want you to do? I mean, I don't know where this letter's going after we write it, because it's "to whom it may concern."
Well, that's an interesting question, because one of the things that Humboldt County has effectively done in taking the lead in the cannabis industry is establishing regulations that address unique circumstances. And one of the unique circumstances that I think the ad hoc committee with the charge of the board is attempting to address right now is how to lower the cost of entry to the truly small farmer. And so, that is being evaluated, and perhaps one of the ways that the County of Humboldt can once again take the lead is by exploring and developing ways to truly do that and then present that as a model to the state, as a license type that then creates a point of entry for the small boutique farmer.
Supervisor Bone?
Can you take direction from that right now, or do we need to send you a letter?
That is something that we're actively actually engaged in based on the-
That's, I know, that's what I'm saying. I just, the horses are out. Should we close the gate?
The horses are running. The ordinance is actually, the modification's actually been drafted. Maybe not as we speak, but there is a staff assignment to make the modifications to the ordinance, to bring back, at least to the ad hoc committee, and then in discussions with the public and with the agencies and bring it back through the public hearing process.
And through the chair, I just, and I appreciate Supervisor Bass for pulling this, because I wanted to sign this when I saw the draft on, or when I just saw the heading and then realized it's, what we kind of have been saying all along is, you know, is to help the small farmer. So, I'm wondering if we just need to send it back with the ad hoc to basically, I'd like, what I'd like to do is incentivize the ad hoc committee to keep following up on the work they're doing to help the small farmer.
So, if I could answer some-
Supervisor Bass?
What I was just going to say is, it does sound like this has been in the ad hoc committee, and I think the two supervisors, Madron and Chair Fennel, are on this, so it's good to know the discussions are happening. And I would almost think, and I do appreciate the change in the language to make it more broad, but I'm almost thinking if we had more, if the group could come up with, the ad hoc group could come up with more specifics on the incentives that could work, it would actually have more steam when it gets to the people we want it to encourage, I think. So, I didn't mind the more broad language, but I do think it would make a lot more sense if a few things could be teased out and identified by the ad hoc group to actually put some real particulars in it, maybe.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I did work with Estelle on this, and she reviewed it, and we both agreed to move it forward. But that being said, I appreciate the input that we've received since putting it on the agenda. And, you know, one of the difficult things for us up here with the Brown Act is to have any kind of discussion at all that can lead us to a concept of what we might want to move forward. And the only way we really can do that is here at the diocese. We're not allowed to talk to more than one other supervisor. So, it's very difficult back there behind this wall to have a conversation with all five of us to move that discussion forward. And so, in a way, putting this on here allows us to do this. I'm fine with pulling this item, actually. You know, it's changed significantly from what I put on here, which was a support of a very specific proposal. And I agree that that proposal is, got some holes in it in terms of trying to figure out how exactly it would work, et cetera. I do appreciate the work that we're doing on the ad hoc, working with John Ford, our director, and we will be coming back in the not-too-distant future with some specifics. And so, I'm fine with taking that approach with it. In many ways, as I said, this is just to try and create an opportunity for us to have a discussion as a full board. So, I appreciate the input from my colleagues, and with that, I guess we should probably hear from the public and then, but, you know, I'm willing to pull the item as well, so.
I thank you all for your, sorry, Supervisor-
And the only thing that had me concerned is, is I'm going through, you know, knowing full well on the Brown Act and all that stuff and everything else, and I don't, I get the agenda, I can figure it out, but when the people that are going to have to implement, support it, and actually, you know, enforce it, don't know a thing about it, and it's fairly vague, it leaves too many holes. And I understand why only one entity so far has approved it, the entity of his home county. And with that being said, I know Mendocino, Trinity, and numerous other counties call you, I, and our office to say, "How are you guys doing this?" Because, like I said, we're number one in the state in licenses. We're now, you know, a little rural Humboldt County, but, you know, we're doing a pretty good job, and what we've done is a pretty good job. And as we get one thing figured out, that maybe that last link is that small cottage, you know, and like I said, it's got a great title, but just if we can work it out and include the people that are going to have to implement it, enforce it, and write it in the discussion, I think it'd be great.
Well, I do thank you all for your comments. I would like to make a point that I agreed to have this on here, basically because of the concept. Reading the draft that was provided gave me a lot of concern. It was very vague, had no authorship, didn't seem to have any foundation in anything that I could really look into. I think that the direction we're going in is a good one. We're definitely working to address the concerns of small growers. We've already included that, as Director Ford said, in our ordinance. Maybe that's not enough for some. We've got Project Trellis, which is to help people, and now we're looking, as I had been mentioned, myself and Supervisor Madron, at another category, yet another category that might make it easy for people to enter the regulated market. And I think, in terms of Mendocino, I know that they're struggling, and we met with them and a group of counties at the California State Association of Counties Conference just recently, and have created a regional entity that's kind of revitalizing the North Coast Regional Group that first talked about local control when we're putting all of the various ordinances together throughout state. I think bottom line, what we can do for Mendocino is help them through this regional entity and perhaps help them with the work that we're doing here. So, I think there's definitely a way we can do that. With that, I'd like to open it up to public comment.
Can you have public comment on something that's pulled?
Ken Swawski, appreciate using this as a placeholder, is what I call it, a reason to get it out for discussion. In my opinion, and many people's opinion, this is the one part of the tip of the spear where we've been lacking. We've been the tip of the spear for, what, I don't know, four years now? And these people have felt like they're left out of the process, the smaller growers and the carrots that can be given. Totally support you coming up with your exact specifics you have, and then where this letter goes to, well, it goes to all of the people you spoke about, the other counties who have interest. It goes to Paul Ramey with Woods Office, it goes to Maguire, it goes to Fish and Wildlife, and it goes to the Water Board, all of the players who hopefully can enable us to go ahead and have this particular permit, as you call it, under the counter, or however you want to call it, but to minimize the expense, the time, and the things that have precluded these small people from participating and being encouraged to do some of the remediation that might go with this, just slight things, you know, maybe a culvert here, maybe a little further from a stream there. But that's been some, a lot of angst for those of us who kind of look after the environment. I'm not going to speak for Hum App or Hugh Waddles in the woods, Mr. Wood there. He used to be Hugh Walks in the woods, but now we refer it to that way. But, you know, when I talk to them on an ongoing basis, a lot of these things are major concerns, you know, even the 10,000 ones. I had one there, which seemed like we have six times as much water being used in the Matold Basin, you know, and all these kind of things hopefully will get fixed. It's time for a 3.0 or at least getting started on that maybe, or just an amendment to 2.0, but it needs to be of some significance, some size, and deal with the smaller growers' concerns, because they have not felt like they could participate in this. So, and a lot of them haven't to our detriment. So, thank you for my opportunity to speak on this pulled item from consent.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Thomas.
Morning, Board of Supervisors. Thomas Mulder, CEO, Humboldt Redwood Healing. So, when I first seen the agenda item, I saw it on Facebook, and I was like, the title of it, I was super excited. But then, myself, I always read into things. So, then I started reading into it, and I was super concerned with the language in there. I read this as yet, the proposed, I'm thankful that you pulled the microbusiness, but the way the microbusiness is, the language with it, the proposed language, it's actually promoting indoor. If you guys, I listened to 15 hours of you guys debating about energy, and, you know, you're basically going to promote indoor again with allowing up to 2,500 square feet. So, things, I support the idea of like this ad hoc committee coming with some solid language, meeting with the Director of Public Works, Planning and Building, Sheriff's Department, Ag Department, all these different logistical issues, and then also maybe meeting with some of the different industry leaders out there to come up with some solid language, like, let's try to come forward with solid language, like a real license type that actually could move through with the state. Just a couple of ideas with the microbusiness theory, you know, with the sun grown ML1, that should be bumped up to 10,000 square feet. And if you guys are as concerned about that energy as you really are, you should bump that indoor part down to 500 square feet. I just saw this as like a way to sneak in, you know, 2,500 square feet of indoor and run your whole operation there is the way I read it. I mean, if you want a bunch of warehouses, I mean, I did, I've driven by Ukiah, there's quite a few warehouses there. I think people are trying to light up. Maybe I'm wrong. Push forward for compost testing, you know, that's another one to try to work on and really get that through, because that's something I see, I personally have a problem with the, you know, having the small batches. If it's not a certain amount of weight, it's not even worth bringing to market, and you got to, you know, it's biomass, basically. And another thing is try to get the state to acknowledge how the county sees one parcel or adjoining parcels as one thing. Don't make people go after the nursery license and the processing license, and it's really more of an impact to the land. So, people are having to build out another building to process, and it's, if we're talking about impacts to the land, let's think about that. Let's try to do what Humboldt's doing and get the county or the state to acknowledge same premises and allowable uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, morning. I'm John Enman. I'm an IHSS provider, and I've been a union cohort for that purpose since 2000. It's come to my attention that a coworker has-
Excuse me, John. Right now, we're talking about the letter proposed by Supervisor Madron. We'll go into public-
When does that one happen?
The public comment will be coming pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, pardon.
No problem.
Good morning. I'm going to wear a different hat right now. I have two hats I'm wearing today, I guess. I'm Liliana Dubois. I just recently stepped away from my position as publisher for Sensi Magazine. I'm still a partner, and I still own the magazine. I'm also a member of some of those organizations you men- I'm also a member of some of those organizations you mentioned and very involved in this industry. And I didn't even know this discussion was happening until just now. And I have hundreds, I lead thousands of people across the world in multiple groups or communities that would very much like to support you in this conversation. I actually am personal friends with the Chair of the National Cannabis Industry Association, and she would love to have a conversation with all of you, including John. They do see us as leaders. They don't just see us in leaders' policy, but they believe we're the ones who can fix their problems, such as pollinization, such as crop loss, such as how to build this so it works because we did it for so long and it's failing across the United States. So I ask you to listen to what Thomas said. When I'm talking to my team, you know, we hold these events and everybody gets really excited and people wonder how they go off so well because they go right and tight, we have to start small. I was talking to John the other day and I said, "We have to start from the seed that started this." The culture, the genetics, the research. If we start studying, if we start just, if we stop focusing on the fact that we're broken-back farmers, people will want to come and visit us because then we're the innovators and we're the leaders again. And we have positioned ourselves as broke-back farmers who actually shut out all our real innovators. And so I have no idea what you're talking about right now, but I beg of you to like, let's start from a different ideology and start small and look where we started and try to recreate that and support our community in that because that's really why we have this building, that's why we all eat so well, and why we're all so kind and happy, is because of that community culture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Board. My name is Ross Gordon. I'm Policy Director with Humboldt County Growers Alliance. Want to thank the Board for having this detailed discussion. We very much support incentives to help small farmers. I think that's, you know, a top priority that the county needs to have and the state needs to have. And I'm really glad to see the Board having this conversation about specific and sort of concrete ways to make that happen. Appreciate some of the conversation around this particular cottage micro-business. I think it's important to have conversations about, is that, you know, the most effective and best way to incentivize small farmers to be in the system and be successful within the system? The one thing I just wanted to add to this conversation is that at HJ, we have a lot of different ideas for ways to incentivize small farmers. Things like cooperatives. Cooperatives right now are a major tool that should be really helpful for small farmers, but I think a lot of folks are struggling with it. There are restrictions on cooperatives, which no other license type needs to face. You know, there's sort of this paradoxical system where the smallest farmers are being asked to follow more restrictions than big consolidated companies. And so that's one big area of state law we can focus on. Things like compositing for testing. Testing, the way that that's set up, ends up being more burdensome on small farmers than large farmers. Compositing is one strategy for addressing that, that Oregon has already adopted, and that can go a long way to streamlining those costs. Appalachians, which I know folks are already working on, issues like access to processing, access to transportation. There are probably a dozen different policy areas we could talk about that would go a really long way towards lowering those barriers to entry. So just wanted to say, I appreciate this conversation and look forward to talking more with the ad hoc committee and working with you all on implementing some of those solutions to help folks where it's really sorely needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. I think what... Sorry, go ahead. So Supervisor Bones, Supervisor Madron?
And what I'd like to do is just for the ad hoc, I guess we don't need to make another ad hoc, but for the ad hoc with, what I'd like to do is maybe every Board member, at least one meeting, because we always hear, "I've got all these phone calls, I've got all these phone calls." So with the narratives coming from us, I think what we could do is all, is maybe at least have one meeting so the narrative comes from all of us, but through the mouths of a small farmer. And we all pick somebody that's having trouble going through the process, and they sit down with one meeting, not extended meetings, not anything else because it takes so much time, and actually put all the problems out on the paper that are coming both from the east, the south, the Matold, whatever the case be. So everybody has somebody at the meeting, so we're not saying, "Well, this is what I'm hearing, this is what I'm hearing." Because the narrative, by the time it's told us, and then we take it, John says, "Well, that's not the way it is." No, that's not the problem. No, you have to pay that fee. You know, you get to the point, just because the guy's built an 800-square-foot house, he still has to pay the hookup fee for, it's the same for a 1,600 square, you know, you still got to pay the... So those, there's certain costs that aren't avoidable. And I think somewhere in there, we need to get a representative of a small grower from each area so they can bring in their wish list and then the feasibility of some of those. We can't rubber stamp and says, "Yeah, just go ahead and be damned on setbacks and everything else." We still have to follow guidelines, and if we're going to stay on that 25 to 5,000, and I appreciate Thomas bringing up the, about the indoor because that 5,000 indoor is a, that scares me again because that's where we, it's going to be so hard for us to enforce. So if we could just at least have one meeting with small growers that are trying to go through the process, and I don't know if that's an availability or anything like that.
May I ask, are you saying the full Board with that, or you're asking the ad hoc committee to?
The ad hoc with Mr. Ford, and I'm not so... And since it's just one meeting, since it's one meeting, I'm not so sure you don't get a, at least somebody from Fish and Wildlife. I know the Water Board's a little tougher, but we have Fish and Wildlife here. Have them there so the reality of what you're actually asking for can be done. Because you can, everything sounds good, back to this, this sounds great on paper, but implementation is almost an impossibility. I'm sure the sheriff would like to have somebody there because if he's going to be chosen with the plan to enforce it, planning and building obviously be there. Jeff Dolph could have a rep, or just a one-shot meeting, limit it to one hour, what, how can we make your life easier? I just, and then you guys have something to work with.
Well, we'll definitely work it and take all of the suggestions that have been offered. And once we've come up with some proposals, we'll bring it back to the full Board. Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, well, this is exactly why this is on here, so we can have this discussion. And I appreciate the feedback that we received today, and the comments are well-received. I mean, absolutely, there's a lot of work to do to reach out to a lot of different people to make sure that we're getting this right. Estelle and I on the Ad-Hac Committee, or Supervisor Fennell and myself, have already started setting up some meetings with folks. We encourage you to submit ideas and concepts to us of who we should be meeting with, and we will do our due diligence to meet with as many people as we can and formulate as specific of proposals as we can with the basic concept that we are trying to reduce the cost of entry for small farmers. I personally absolutely agree. I frankly wish there was no indoor, except perhaps for mother plants and things like that, from many perspectives. So this particular proposal did have a number of problems and issues with it, so I'm fine with pulling it, as I said. But basically, trying to reduce the cost of entry and create new avenues for direct sales for small farmers, farmers' markets, things like that, whatever we can do to reduce the cost of entry and improve the ability to return income would go a long way. But again, those specifics are to be developed. So at this point, as I said, I'm pulling the item from the agenda.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Madron. So with that, basically, we're going to let that, let her go. We don't need a vote on it. Direction, both to the ad hoc committee and staff to move forward with this concept. So thank you very much, Director Ford, also. Look forward to working with you on it. So that will bring us now to public comment on non-agenda items. And this is where you can come up, John, if you would like. Public comment on non-agenda items.
My name is Linda Lee and I live in Manila, and I think I, this is a consent agenda item and a non-consent. I didn't, I see that you're here adopting a resolution for the denial of the Humboldt Wind Project, and I just want to say again how supremely disappointed I am in that decision. And I didn't want to get up and come here today, but I felt like it was my civic duty to give you my feedback once again. And I feel like you all abdicated your civic duty to represent all Humboldt County residents. Estelle, I don't know how you could sit on that RCEA board and talk about the need for renewable energy in Humboldt County. And Mike, I'm sorry, he's not here today because a few minutes, a few days after the decision, he admitted to me personally that he had caved to the ferocity of the opposition and that he was afraid of future unrest. And that's no way to deal with the needs of the county that you were elected to represent. He also told me that we should have done more, those supporters should have done more to support this project. Well, you know, now I hear things coming up about some sort of ordinances that weren't in place that would make this hard. Well, that's your job to know about ordinances and to know what, you know, what needs to be done so that something can happen. I think it was a huge failure for Humboldt County and it really shakes my vision for the future in Humboldt County. So I don't know where we go from here, but it's, but you're talking about resolutions. This is a thing that is not going to be resolved for a long time, if ever. So I hope you all think a little bit more, you know, I, a couple of weeks before this decision, I stopped, everybody I met, in the grocery store, the checkout clerk, everybody I saw, I said, "How do you feel about the Humboldt Wind Energy Project?" Nobody knew anything about it. There was a few people, you know, the Time Standard did a pretty good job. I think the Journal could have done a better job of covering this huge, huge issue for our constituents. And nobody knew anything about it, and I'm convinced that if this was put on the ballot, it would have passed overwhelmingly. But it wasn't, and the people spouting misinformation and hate won over, and it's a very sad day for Humboldt County.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Dukes. I sit on the Steering Committee of 350 Humboldt, a local climate action group, and also on the Eureka Energy Committee. And I wanted to reinforce what Linda just said. I was appalled at the way the Planning Committee, Planning Commission and Board meetings were The divisiveness in this community is going to take probably as long to heal as the timber wars took. We elected you to make decisions for us collectively that we cannot make for ourselves individually. I've got solar panels on my roof, I drive an electric car, and my grandchildren are still going to be dealing, my grandchildren, we are going to be dealing with climate change. Ask the Australians, we cannot stick our heads in the sand. On September 11th, 2018, you passed a resolution calling for 100% clean and renewable electricity by 2025? I don't remember the exact date. Good luck with that. I'd like to know how you're going to accomplish it. It will not be by all of us going and living off the grid. It will not be with NIMBYism. The entire world is our backyard, and as long as we refuse to acknowledge that, we're going to have some real problems. I assume all of you are doing everything you can individually to make up for all of the electricity that was not going to be provided by that wind farm. I was extremely disappointed in the way those meetings were conducted. I was horrified, utterly horrified, at the threats, the bullying, and I cannot help but agree with what Linda just said. I've not talked with any of you individually about it since, partly because I was so upset. But there's going to be very, very little discussion about where we go from here unless you take the lead. That's what we elected you for. Do your jobs.
Hello, I'm John Inman, I live in Eureka. I've been an IHSS provider in Humboldt County since 2000, since 1998, and I've been a union cohort and...
I can't hear you, back here.
A union cohort and advocate for the IHSS community. IHSS is a program that supports people to live in their homes and live independently. They're not building any more skilled nursing facilities, and the ones that are in play are woefully understaffed and they give terrible care. It's come to my attention that one of my coworkers and several others, according to IHSS payroll locally, are not getting their checks paid on time. So there is a contractor who, the timesheets are sent to, and they're paid to do their work and they're not doing it. This isn't, I'm not making this up, you can talk to payroll at IHSS, they'll confirm it. People are weeks waiting for their checks. This was actually before Christmas. It's long past Christmas now, it's not the mail. There are people that actually get paper checks. The Board of Labor has been informed, the 17% of your part of, that's contributed to IHSS is involved, and the last, I did reach out to somebody on the Board and I was told, "Well, the person can go get food stamps." I felt that very unfeeling. I still feel appalled of Philip Crandall, who I battled with endlessly till we got our contract in 2013. He really didn't like the program, he was prejudicial, and according to his workers all throughout the Health and Human Services, he wasted money. The program actually needs an audit, the whole program of IHSS needs an audit because things are not getting done. But the people in Chico need to do their work, and something needs to be investigated in that way. You guys have the power, you've done it before, less than 10 years ago, you rattled the cages in Sacramento, and this problem went away. And people that don't do the work, they don't understand it, and they feel like, I hate this, class enemies. I don't, I don't think we should be in a class war with one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Ken Swawwowski, the people who spoke against what you did have left. I'm speaking in favor of what you did. My bell didn't work here, I've got to work the bell. So I have people I work with and I, for a long time, that bell was for three different people. I'm not going to mention the names of two of them. I refer them as Level One Archangels. They look after Mother Nature's needs and what's best for Mother Nature. I am going to give my great shout-out, the third person, to Supervisor Chair Estelle Fennell. I appreciated not just that you are willing to listen to your constituents, which is what your job is to do and represent up here, and you represent all of them. I felt you represented the majority of the people, made comments and took the time. I think you did your job properly. But the biggest thing I appreciate was your, it seemed to me, willingness to listen to Mother Nature. And if I recall, you related, you went to the beach, you went to the ocean, you went to your special place. And when I go to my special places, I refer to it as picking up the tin can. When you communicate with Mother Nature, it's not because there's cell towers around. The tin can is what we used to use as kids, had a string from person to person. And so when you pick up that tin can and actually listen to Mother Nature, go to your special place, however you want to define that, and get your feedback, that's when the best decisions are made. And I appreciate you taking the time to do that. I appreciate all of you to get away from the people, get away from the noise, get away from all the things going on here, and get back to Mother Nature a little bit and just kind of say, "Well, what would Mother Nature do under these circumstances?" My opinion on this project is we were attempting to fix a problem with another problem, and that's just not how you fix things in this world. So I did notice in today's paper, Rex Bones on the front page there on the debate, and one of his comments was that Humboldt County is open for business. And that's one of the biggest things that I support here. I have another article that was made by Mr. Matt Owens, Matthew in the middle, Humboldt County's closed for business. Well, I don't agree with that. I think we should all be open for business. We move on from here. I'm working behind the scenes for what I can do to vet and come up with some of the other projects we're anticipating, and I think we all can look toward the future rather upon, rather than dwelling upon the past, as some other speakers have been doing. I think we can create these jobs that were on this thing. I think we can create these jobs that were on this thing. I did want to make mention there, when you're in this forum, I appreciate it when you address each other with respect. I think other places, maybe Supervisor Steve Madrowan has his name here. This particular article referred to a name that he considers kind of a personal name amongst friends and family, and it's been taken sometimes in a derogatory way. And I don't take it that way, but I think for those of us who have respect for someone, if they have a sacred name, or I consider a Native American name or something, that should be respected and not used in a callous way. Thank my opportunity to speak on this today, and thank you for your service.
Welcome.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder, CEO of Humboldt Redwood Healing. Again, I got two-part comments I'm trying to get in here. So first off, I'd love to see pushing forward to modify ordinance 2.0. I've been saying that for probably a year or so. I think we really need to look at the EIR and look at the actual environmental impact, and then actually look at the amount of square footage that's been permitted or proposed to be permitted, and see, in my opinion, I think we're well under what was pre-existing. So I think we could allow, you know, open up the allowable pre-existing, maybe cap it at 10,000 square feet. I'm just, I'm just going off of, I talked to a lot of people that are outside. They didn't have the resources, the time, the money, whatever it was, and they didn't come forward. Some of them are on TPZ land. Some of it's like, one person in particular is the flattest TPZ land I've ever seen, but, you know, it's technically TPZ. So something to think about, just reopening that pre-existing application. And then this is the other one, the people, the really, really small ones, the people, I talked to a lot of people, they're producing 10 to 20 pounds a year. I don't see anything, anything able to fit them in the legal state licensing framework. They, you know, they probably consume half of that, and they barter the other half with other goods throughout the year. So as talking with square footage people I talked to, what if we up the allowable square footage for personal use? They come in with a doctor's recommendation, 200 square feet under an acre, 500 square feet over an acre. Use some measure S tax dollars to get some clear identifiable markers that our satellites can pick up, and that, that way we making sure that they're growing within that square footage. Just an idea, those are the people that I talked to that I feel that they're left out, and I don't see a way to bring them into the license regulation. Okay, got to switch channels real quick. Wind Energy Project. I watched or listened to almost every single hour, except for when my internet cut out for the Planning Commission and you guys. I thought you guys had a really good debate. I thought you really, really listened to a lot of things. That's from me seeing on my phone, I wasn't in the room, you know? The only, there was a couple of concerns that I came to, though. In the future, if there's a project proposed and a tribe or any other entity opposes the project, and the applicant is not the landowner, I think whoever opposes it should be allowed the same time to speak as a landowner. That's, that's me as a developer-type person, I just think it would be equitable. The other quick thing that I wanted to bring out, there's a couple of concerns brought up by a couple of different supervisors about rural living and kind of not really liking it, so I hope to reach out to those supervisors and have a conversation about that someday. I mean, they aren't in my district, but it just, there was a couple concerning things, but I respect the decision you guys made. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. So I also had Claudia here, and I'm so sorry that I didn't mention that earlier. You should have gone before everybody, Claudia.
See, the best for last.
That's right, the best for last.
Sort of why I signed up.
There's a breath.
Sorry about that.
But that's all right. I still have time for my doctor's appointment. Good morning, Supervisors and Ladies and Gentlemen. More than 20 years ago, I joined the Eureka Women's Club, and I'm very glad that I did because I've enjoyed all of the work that I've done there over the years. One of the first members, one of the first jobs I had on the board at the Eureka Women's Club was Community Services Director, and I said, "What do I do?" And they said, "Find ways to help the community." So I talked to my dad, who used to be the manager of the State Employment Office here in Eureka, and I said, "What can we do?" And he said, "Well, you know, a lot of organizations have a breakfast, and they raise money, and they do good things with that money." Sounds good, but I don't want to have a pancake breakfast. And my dad said, "Make waffles." So going on 20 years now, we've had a community fundraiser breakfast the third Sunday in January every year, and we make waffles. For six years, my dad sent me $150 seed money that I used to buy flour, buttermilk, and make waffles. It has grown far past that point. $150 might buy buttermilk now. And my dad passed away in 2006. This year, the Eureka Women's Club actually put in memory of Bill Cranford on the tickets. And I have a ticket. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Claudia.
I still miss it. I have a ticket for each of the Supervisors here. If you would, and for the Chair, if you would pass those out, and somebody make sure Mr. Wilson gets his. Those tickets are paid for, so bring your family and buy their tickets. There'll be a raffle, there'll be an auction, there'll be homemade waffles from scratch, egg dishes, ham, bacon, all sorts of good things to eat, and it's a fun morning. We've changed the hours a bit so we can catch the after-church crowd. It will actually go until 2:00 this year. I hope to see all of you there. I know you're all busy people, but Rex is coming, Virginia's coming. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you. And I'm sorry, I have a doctor's appointment. Normally I would stay and listen, but I have to go.
Claudia, thank you so much, and I really apologize for not calling on you first. I didn't, give me a pass, it's my first meeting. Thank you, and thank you for the invitation.
Claudia, just through the Chair, just so you know, you had me at waffles.
Actually, I like the egg dishes are kind of like what really give me there.
And for everybody else, it's January 19th. Thank you. All righty, no further comment on items not on the agenda, so we'll go to our special presentations. And we begin with the Human Rights Commission introduction of their Kindness Campaign. Supervisor Boom.
Well, I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and read this.
I don't know how to use this.
Well...
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
I've got the proclamation here for Human Rights Awareness Month, which was last month.
Yes.
And I think we've already read this, haven't we?
Yes.
Okay, that's the proclamation I have in front of me. But I think you want to explain the new campaign, the Human Rights Commission, and I was asked to bring it forward, and here you are.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for the time, Madam Chair and Board, and thank you for issuing the Human Rights Awareness Proclamation in December. We appreciate your support. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the Human Rights Commission Humboldt #HumboldtKindness Campaign. It's a social media initiative to lead the community in random acts of kindness and to help remind us of our kindness in Humboldt County. Martin Luther King once said, okay, now I gotta, sorry, you guys, this is going to mess me up probably. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Acts of kindness are the antidote to hate, bullying, violence, and general discord. This doesn't turn out very well, but this is a picture of a couple hanging out, and we just put Humboldt #HumboldtKindness, #Friendship, #HumboldtCounty. The Difference a Word Can Make. Today, we are facing war, and our planet is burning, as our local community struggles with its own economic and cultural transition, which we've heard a lot about today already. Hate thrives in chaos, but kindness opens us up to clear communication and positive action. In 2019, the Humboldt Human Rights Commission created an anti-hate committee to combat hate speech, cyberbullying, racism, and discrimination. Through new leadership and the desire to counter hateful acts with acts of kindness, the Commission renamed the committee the Humboldt Kindness Committee, and the Humboldt #Kindness Campaign was created. So we have a call to action for you, for all our local leaders, our media sources, our community members, our educators, and our healers. We are asking that all leaders, educators, media sources, law enforcement, business owners, and the community at large post photos, videos, articles, and anything that supports kindness in Humboldt County on their social media outlets with the hashtag #HumboldtKindness. We also recommend that you put #HumboldtCounty, #yourbusiness, #thecommunitythatyou'rein, because what this does, it gains a butterfly effect throughout social media and all our social media resources with that same hashtag. I have been a part of numerous campaigns like this. You can look at the Sunset Strip, and the whole revitalization of Sunset Strip was created from a campaign like this. We're asking that you join us, so we're asking that you participate through the hashtags. We're also asking that you, and the community at large, join us at the Martin Luther King event with the NAACP. We'll be there with Humboldt Access, interviewing community members and leaders on kindness in Humboldt County, and putting a PSA together with Humboldt Access that could be shared on multiple networks, including social media and regular media. We believe by spreading these acts of kindness on social media, we are going to promote the best of Humboldt County, as we remind our community how acts of kindness can create positive change. And another example of what you could post as a photo, you could just post a photo like this of you and your family out, and if you feel if it emanates a positive vibe for our community, then please, we ask you to use the hashtag #HumboldtKindness. Any questions? That's all we're asking.
Any questions for Lelania, Supervisor Bass, or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question. It's like, I appreciate this, especially coming after the last couple of meetings that we had, where I think there was a real lack of kindness shown to pretty much almost everybody in that room, which actually rolled into the community, and whether this would have made a difference at that point in time, I don't know, but I think is sorely needed. So I do appreciate that. I'm not real good on social media, so I might need to call you for pointers.
You call me, and I'll come show you how. It's actually really easy, once you know the tricks. In fact, we'd be happy to talk to all of you of how to empower your own network with this campaign, because it can help all of you, all of us that participate.
Thank you, Lelania. Supervisor Boom.
And I will apologize, this did not get read in, because we had those wonderful meetings on the windmill. And I'm, and I'm gonna, and probably, I'm gonna go off a little bit, because I ran the meetings with 400 and 500 people in a room and everything else. And I think I may have been the only one threatened with Bob Wire, Winchesters, my career, bodily harm. In fact, I'm almost sure I was the only one. But I think that was just the passion people felt about it. I've had friends that said they hate me now because of it and everything else, and I kind of hoped we'd move on the day afterwards and kind of go back to trying to make Humboldt County open for business. If we don't allow people to come in, if we shut the door before we ever hear of a presentation, and they were here for four years, and so I'm not going to dwell on that and everything else. But I wanted to thank everybody that came and talked, and even the ones that were loud, I don't think they meant to be harmful. I think they meant to be passionate, and some people express their passion in a different way. I didn't take anything personally. I had a lot of people worried about me, and I understand the passion, and if people want to hang their dislike and their hate for me on a single vote, I don't think I'm the problem. I know I'm not the problem, because I don't harbor any ill feelings to anybody that was on the other side of the aisle. I just think that was something we discussed, the decision was made. I, you know something, I woke up the next morning, I still had three grandsons, and I was a pretty happy camper, so I, the important things in my life are still there. So with that, and I appreciate you guys doing this, because I don't think people are aware of the amount of discussions that go on here, and the way people relay their passions. And for that, their three minutes, if they want to be mad as hell at one of us up here, I for one, I'm not going to take it personally, and will probably go out and buy them a cocktail afterwards, or a soda, or a kombucha, or whatever they want to do. So with that, I will give you the proclamation, so you have it with the stack of the other ones. And we appreciate all the work the Human Rights Commission does, because I don't think people realize, I think we are the smallest county that has a Human Rights Commission, and I believe we're the only Human Rights Commission in the northern county. And depending what you guys want to call northern, central, and everything else, I don't think Fresno is northern California, just so you guys know. But I think from Mendocino up, we are one of the smallest counties, and we have a very active Human Rights, because their office is right next to ours, and we see them on a daily basis. So I appreciate everything you guys do, and I appreciate Humboldt County for having a Human Rights Commission and doing everything we can to make your jobs easier, which isn't enough sometimes, we hear, but thank you.
It's a joy.
Supervisor Madrowan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hold on a second. Whoops.
She's breaking things. The lights...
That's right, people hate that thing anyway.
It's my first day walking. Yeah. I was in the hospital for five days because my legs stopped working, so I'm, this is my new physical therapy, you guys. Can I say something to what you said, Rex?
Sure.
I wanted to say, first of all, thank you for this proclamation, but this Human Rights Commission, we will not, very soon not be able to claim that, because this Human Rights Commission has shared its information with other counties, including Mendocino, that are now in the process, from that leadership, of developing their own awareness in their own commission. So thank you for that, and thank you for empowering us the way you have.
It's not a title that I claimed proudly, I'm just saying, we have, as a small county, supported our Human Rights Commission. Can't speak for other counties, but I'm glad you're firing them up.
Supervisor Madrowan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Leyla, Leyla, Leyla. I really respect what the Human Rights Commission does, and I think that this whole idea of kindness and respect comes from ourselves. We really can't legislate other people into behaving in certain ways, especially on Facebook and other places where the behavior just seems to get so intense sometimes with each other. And, I mean, I see that as just part of the times we're going through, with so much stress with, you know, potential wars or wars, and all these other things going on. So what I wanted to say was thank you, and all the members of the Commission and others in our community, who realize that change happens mainly with ourselves, and how we personally behave, and that's really the only place we can make change, is how we behave. And we all make mistakes, we all get upset and frustrated, and behave in ways we probably wish we didn't at times, but it doesn't mean we can't reflect and try to do better. So thank you for all of what you all do, and for setting an example. And as you said, now it's spreading to other counties, so thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you. I was wondering, we have one more request, to launch this campaign, if we could get a picture of all of you together to start that hashtag with through the Human Rights Commission. I can take it with my phone, is that allowed? Well, we want to show you together and collaborating.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I have a network of over 27,000 people online that this will go out to, and then it'll butterfly and butterfly out, so it does make an impact.
No, we will, let me just say something first, though, Lelania. I want to, you know, before we do this, I think it's brilliant to use social media to spread this message, because on reflection, I think what we have seen is an erosion of kindness because of social media, unfortunately. And so to turn that around and remind us that kindness actually works is a brilliant move, so good, good for you guys to do that, and yeah, I think we should do this. And I would actually invite...
Anybody. It's really about your leadership showing all of us, whoever can join in, that we are kind and that we do communicate and connect. You know, I feel like I know all of you, and I appreciate that. I communicate that to our outside world constantly, that that's how we create change, because we build on relationships and connections, which means that we have authentic communication.
I'll stand behind the Chair, and you can take this camera.
I'll invite the CAO and County Council as well.
Yeah, because they need, they need love, too. Sorry, you guys.
See you, buddy. This is my new friend, Steve.
Oh, wait, I didn't want to...
Okay, we have the Chair.
I'll invite the CAO and county council as well.
Yeah, because they need love, too.
Sorry, you guys.
This is my new friend, Steve.
Okay, we have the chair.
You can sit, if you want.
Yeah, you are the chair. Yeah, you're the chair.
Sit? Oh, my goodness. Then I'll be tiny.
Down there. Hold on, let's look at Kathy.
Good thoughts, is what my mom would say. Oh, beautiful. Thank you so much, all of you, and for getting it.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Lelania.
I'm glad you're been, feeling been.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Pam Dibaldi, welcome back, guys. I will say, you guys should take her up on her offer to help you with some social media and hashtags. I know some of you are on Facebook, I'm not, but I'm on Instagram, and Instagram is pictures and hashtags and tourism, and I use hashtags all the time when I'm out at the beach with the dog, or the nephew, or the whatever. I like Eureka, How I Humbold, #HumboldtCounty, #this. So, a couple of you have Instagrams. I'm looking at Rex and Estelle, and you don't use them very well, so take her up on it. Let her come in and have a training with you guys, because it is kind of the way of the world and where it's going. You can get off the Facebook hate a little bit, get the pictures, and promote Humboldt, the kindness, the beauty, what we have. She can give you a great lesson. She has a huge network of stuff. And I'm just gonna say, you guys ran those meetings, perfect. We sat there, we watched every hour. You guys did great.
Thank you.
It was, you took some heat, but you handled it a million times better than I thought you were going to. I knew that was how it was gonna go, and you guys did great. So if people are gonna come up and say they ran terrible, perfect. Two minutes, it worked out great, you guys did a good job. And Ryan, Brooke, Kathy, Tracy, all did excellent as well, behind the scenes. I don't think people understand what those ladies and Ryan had to do to make all that go off, so that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Pam. Wish the media was here for that. Thanks, Pam.
Pam, there was a lot of heat about going to a bigger place and making it, and we had to do, but if, we didn't do, Humboldt Access, Humboldt Access jumped up beyond repair, the sound quality for that room, they went on beyond repair, trying to hook up 10 microphones so they all, they all worked, and having the separation that was needed. Our staff was there at 6:30 in the morning to set up for those meetings, because I happened to go by there. Our CAO's office regulated, they, actually, the meetings were supposed to end at 5:00 on the first day, and we negotiated till 7:00 to give everybody the opportunity to talk. And I've heard that from a lot of people, that it was run well, that the chairman did an absolutely wonderful job.
That's why he got this cigar box.
And then he got fired, but anyway, but thank you, because I think there were so many people. We had this much to do with it, as chair, I got the nod to say, yeah, that sounds like a good place, and it'd be enough room and everything else, but Access Humboldt, our four staff members, and our CAO's office, there were probably, at one time, I noticed 13 people from the combined offices making this work, and this doesn't include planning, you know, the planning department and everything else. I think it was very well-run, and if we sit up here and take credit for it, that would be a disservice, because we didn't do that much.
Okay, Pam, now I'm gonna get a little bit more strict here. I do want to say, just since we're drifting all over the place here today, this is the first meeting, and we have more time, I do want to give a shout-out. I had said something about the media, but Access Humboldt has been amazing, and they are our media here in Humboldt County, so thank you, guys. Well, that was a lot of fun, and we're all going to use our Instagrams more and figure out how to do that. And now we will go on to another item, which is the election and official ballot on behalf of the county of, on behalf of the County Medical Services Program, CMSP, and Supervisor Bone will talk us through that one.
And what this does is, we actually had a former member on the CMSP, and then we didn't. They meet every two months, I believe, in something like that in Sacramento. We actually stepped down. One of the reasons we stepped up is, at one time, we had nobody in Humboldt County on the CMSP program, because we had changed Obamacare and the way that the deliverables for indigents to get medical, the options were there for them to go somewhere else. So we didn't have anybody, you know, taking advantage of the CMSP, so it was hard to, I think that was the other option. I still think we have single digits, if we have any. I know the number was low last time I checked, and I hadn't really looked, and I was gonna call, and I ran out of time. But I can speak highly for Leonard Modi, who we have chosen. He's the former police chief of Redding. I think he's on his third term of the Board of Supervisors, been very involved with CSAC and other things, and being former law enforcement, he understands the deliverables of making life more comfortable, and people that need medical care getting medical care so they're not a further burden, you know, basically. So, I support 100%. I appreciate Yoda Shaw for running this election and giving us, you know, a great breakdown on the way we go, but I can fully support Leonard Modi on this, and that's why this has been brought forward. It should be fairly simple, but I'm willing to listen to everybody.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually had been interested in the CMSP position, but then I spoke to make sure Leonard was not interested in it, and he's very interested, and he's done an outstanding job. You know, I wouldn't think, I certainly would not want to disrupt what he's already doing. I think he, you know, I haven't heard anybody else have any interest in it as well. But I think, I think he's excellent to continue in that position, if that's what we choose. I told him I supported him, so. I can make it a motion that we support Leonard Modi for the, we cast our vote for Leonard Modi for the position.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Any, yes, Council Billingsley?
Chair, I was just gonna make sure you call for a public comment.
Oh, yeah. So, any public comment on that? I will also mention that Leonard Modi has been very involved with CSAC and has given a lot of time and dedication. I think he would be, specifically because he is offering and anxious to serve, I think we should support him in that. Think about the future, please, Supervisor Bass. And so I would, I would support it, too, but I'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So, this brings us to our time-set closed session item. We actually will go into closed session at noon, but we're going to make our way in that direction at this point. So I'd invite Council Billingsley to tell us what we are going to be discussing in closed session.
Chair, I would recommend you just go into recess until noon, and then at noon, I would read the closed session items, and you could take the public comment then.
At noon, so come back at noon?
Yes.
Great, all right. Thank you very much. With that, we will not adjourn, but we'll take a break, and we'll be back at noon. Thank you. ...a closed session of the Board of Supervisors, and I'll ask Council Billingsley to fill us in on what we'll be talking about in there.
Yes, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on six items. Five of those items are public employee performance evaluations pursuant to Government Code 54957. Those are the Public Works Director, the Department of Health and Human Services Director, Child Support Services Director, Aviation Director, and the Director of Library Services. The sixth item is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 regarding exposure to litigation in one potential case.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on any of these items?
Good afternoon, Thomas Mulder, again. I'm here to speak on Item 1 and 6. I hope you are receiving a detailed maintenance plan to bring your county roads up to category 4 standards, a plan that has failing and failed culverts with a priority list in repairs and replacements, a discharge plan to bring the county up to state discharge standards, a detailed plan for proper repairs of failing surfaces, no longer accepting the blow-and-go mentality that has been openly discussed by the director at different public meetings I have personally attended. Question for you, and hopefully you're actually meeting with the director. Whose decision was it to chip seal both north and south-bound Stafford Roads with the PCI ratings of 57, 66, and 75, when roads in southern Humboldt have PCI ratings of 23? That rating of 23 is a road I travel, it's less than one mile of county road. It's been asked to be resurfaced multiple times, it has four failing culverts. If the director cannot produce these action plans, please look into sending him to get the proper training, so that way he is skilled and versed to be able to provide those plans for the proper repair of the county roads. We saw that $600,000 is the number I read in the paper to do a rapid repair job to Old Brice Lynn Road. If we had a long-term action plan, probably wouldn't have to spend $600,000, and probably that $600,000 would have been more well-used. So I would, really, really, roads is a big, big problem around here, especially in southern Humboldt where I live, so it'd be nice to see a plan, a long-term plan, not just fix, fix the bleeding that's happening that day, like, let's clean the wound, let's disinfect it and stitch it up and start healing. As far as potential litigation, it's also in the line of roads. I haven't been, I talked to you guys about the stockpiles outside Redway, holy cow. My daughter lives out towards the Cove. I just went out there for Christmas to visit her. Wow. I don't know if you travel that road and all the stockpiles you have right above the creek there. They aren't proper sediment retention, in my opinion, so maybe potential litigation is the State Water Board coming after you for that discharge. I don't know. But it's something that should be taken into consideration when you're doing the evaluation. Again, thank you for my time to speak. Have a good evening, or afternoon.
Thank you. Any further comment on these items? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. And at this point, before we go into closed session, I'd like to mention that we will be adjourning today in memory of a number of people, and I'd like to invite Supervisor Bone to mention a couple of those.
Well, one is Richard Miller, better known as Dick Miller from McKinleville. His family, I've known Dick for numerous years. Him and his brother Don started their business by landscaping the front of their homes, and all of a sudden, they had a business in 1959. And there's some great stories about the first vehicle they bought from OPI, and there's a lot of good history there, but he's, we all know his family members, we sympathize with them, and we want them to know that we don't close them people's honors very often, and it's people that have made a contribution to our community, and Dick Miller certainly did this. And I can't say enough about Fred Nelson, but I would love Virginia to probably present this one, because she was very close with Fred.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Nobody ever called him Albert, but-
I know, it's like, every time, yeah, Fred Nelson was, I think, a gem in the community, third generation, 92 years old. I couldn't believe, until I read today in the Losco's outpost, just how many things he did do that I had no idea about. He talks about when he grew up, you know, the vad then was letting your clothes get as, your pants get as dirty as you possibly could until they could stand on their own. And I thought, well, that's an interesting thing to have in there, but I learned so many little facts. Anyone that went to the Rotary events for the, that the, for the veterans would see that Fred was always there representing Merchant Marine, went on numerous of the Honor Flights, just a real good guy, postmaster for 40 years. He could remember anything on local history, was absolutely amazing. And he, you know, one of the things I remember most, all his community comments, but most about Fred is, he was the mailman when my mother and my father met. My mother worked for Lloyd Bridges Senior, and she'd go over to lunch, and anyway, so I learned a lot more about that courtship from Fred the mailman. I will miss him so much. He's got, his son Chris lives locally, and there's another son that lives in McKinleville, but I will be going to his service, and I'm sure they'll really appreciate this. But thank you, Supervisor Bone, for letting me say a few words. He's a good guy.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to speak just for a second about Mr. Miller. The Millers were major supporters of the Hammond Trail in McKinleville. When I was first working on that project, they were the contractors that I went to, both for materials and supplies, as well as construction work, and they were just great partners in the community, had done so many things for McKinleville, so, thank you, and we will miss you.
And we will also be adjourning in memory of Harold Mendez of Southern Humboldt, a very, very well-known, very well-loved member of our community who worked very hard for his community, for his family, very generous, and a lot of fun, and we will definitely miss Harold. I personally will, for sure. Harold was a great guy. We were at a memorial for him this weekend, Supervisor Bone was there as well, and it was obvious that he touched the lives of so many people in the Il Valley, and we're definitely-
Rotary.
And Rotary. He was a very, very big part of Rotary, very good at selling tickets to special events, very good at raising funds for all sorts of good causes, so he will be dearly missed. Great, thank you very much. Can we please have a report from closed session, please?
Yes, Chair, there's no reportable action on any of the closed session items.
Thank you very much, and with that, we will adjourn the meeting of January 7, 2020, in memory of Fred Nelson, Dick Miller, and Harold Mendez. We are adjourned.